Great. All right, Chambers County Commissioner's Court. Go ahead, Gordon. I wasn't standing there ready to do the job. This is. All right, now, Chairman, Commissioner's Court come to order. This is a regular meeting on Tuesday, fourteenth day of December, twenty twenty-one, nine thirty a.m., County Court Room, Anoack, Texas. You all rise. Gorgon prayer. So, I just send the Father the message for this day. Over, thank you for the season and what it means to us. And we pray that you've got us to make the best decisions we can for folks at Chambers County. This is now a prayer. Amen.
Amen.
You pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Oh, for the record, Commissioner Tass is not present this morning.
Can you mention your fifteen?
Do what? Yeah, I didn't mention that before, right? But keep those folks in your prayers, Kentucky, Arkansas, Missouri. That was absolutely horrible. And then also, Bakersfield, where they had the drive-by shooting over the weekend. Citizens comments. It's wrong. Good morning. So, if you're out on town.
There we go. Okay. Judge Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak to you this morning. My name is Glory Romer. I am the publisher and managing editor of the Seabreeze Beacon. I just wanted to tell you how proud I was of Changers County during the Charles Saunders funeral and everything that went with it. The sheriff saw this, Ron Hawthorne, Captain Eric, how are you pronouncing his name? Cavardi did an excellent job logistically with getting it all arranged. I spoke to a lot of the family members and people who came in from out of town and were really impressed with our county and how we welcomed home this hero. And I want to just tell you kudos and thank you so much for a job well done.
Thank you, ma'am. And it was well done and I'm proud of everyone involved. Okay, it's all citizens' comments I have. We'll start out with a supplemental. Actually, Lauren posted a special call meeting for December twenty-fourth, excuse me, fourteenth, nine thirty a.m. Discussing, consider presentation from Ralph Wilson, TCDRS, lawyer representative regarding the two thousand twenty-two TCDRS Texas County and District Retirement Assistance Plan Assessment. Good morning, sir. Come on up.
It's Wallace, Judge, but Wilson will work fine.
You're right, it is Wallace, but my agenda says Wilson, so. Pull it, no, Doug, pick it up.
Are we to work?
Pick it up and you gotta pull the little.
Oh, that's a.
High tech.
I've got to be smarter. You've got to be smarter than the average.
And just leave it up, somebody else will think it. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. I know y'all are used to seeing a different face here every year. Tim Crowsey, he's been y'all's representative for quite a while. But unfortunately, you're stuck with me now. I've been with the retirement system for seventeen years, so you're not getting a rookie. I've seen a few things. We just had a little bit of a redistricting, so to speak, this year. I had everything from Jefferson East. And so, they just bumped me over a little bit more, but.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. And I know that Tim does a briefing for y'all every year just to get you updated on things, let you know how things are going with the retirement system. And where's Chelsea?
Chelsea.
Okay, I was gonna say hello to her because I haven't met her yet.
But she's down the hall, left on the right.
Okay, all right. But each of you should have a folder and I'm gonna begin with what's in that right sleeve. It's this document here. And normally, if you open that up real quick, this document would be what you normally see every year, which is the retirement plan assessment that we produce for the county, letting the county know what the actuaries looked at and what they calculated when it comes to determining the cost for the coming year for the county to fund benefits for its employees. This year, there's a special note that's been added to the assessment. And I'm not gonna read through this whole thing. Basically, up until now, there's different long-term assumptions that our actuaries look at when determining county's cost to fund benefits. And one of those, and it's a very important one, is investment returns. And up until this year, the long-term investment return assumption has been eight percent. But our investment folks are looking, and let me back up a little bit. You know, we've been doing about close to nine percent for the last thirty-five years. But they're looking at the crystal ball and they're saying that they believe that investment returns aren't gonna be as large as they've been in the past. And so, based on their recommendation, our Board of Directors, which are made up of county commissioners, county judges across the state, they made the decision to reduce that investment return assumption from eight percent to seven and a half percent. Well, of course, by doing that, that impacts costs to counties on funding benefits. If they're thinking investments returns are gonna be a little lower in the future. And so, we'll talk about how much of an impact that had for y'all. And just so you know, we have a couple of things in place for when decisions like this are made. In years where we do better than expected on investment returns, what our board usually does is they'll allocate some of those extra earnings to a reserve fund to help offset things like this year. And just so y'all know, they allocated eight hundred million dollars to offset the impact that this is gonna have on cost to counties. So, that's just one of the things. Let's go ahead and turn to page two on that document, which breaks down the numbers for the county. And Judge Commissioners, y'all let me know if some of this you don't wanna hear and you already know, benefit levels. Should I go over that and just review those with you?
Well, we have one new commissioner that's.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I mean, if y'all have the time, I do on it. Basically, your folks put in seven percent out of their paycheck into the plan each month when y'all hire them. So, they're saving out through their entire career. And if they retire down the road from the county, the county is telling them, I'm gonna give you two dollars and twenty cents for every dollar you put in out of your paycheck. It's that two hundred and twenty percent match. And so, that's kind of the meat of the plan right there. Now, if you move down to that next section, how do they get there? Well, first, they've got to earn that right to retire or invest. They've got to have eight years of service, okay? And there's three ways they become eligible to retire, and they've got to be vested regardless. The first way is to be age sixty. The second way is what is called the rule of seventy-five. I bet some of y'all have heard of that. It just means your age plus your years of service has to equal seventy-five. So, if I'm fifty and I've been with the county twenty-five years, you do the math, you're eligible to retire, okay? The third way is just any age of thirty years of service. So, you know, y'all could have somebody come in at Roden Bridge at eighteen and be eligible to retire at, what, forty, forty-eight? But I tell folks all the time that since this is a cash-based or a savings-based plan, you can be eligible all you want to, but being able to afford to retire is a whole different story, you know? And I give y'all myself as an example, I'm gonna be eligible next November, but I've got a kid that just started in college. I'm not going anywhere. But it's always good to have it in your back pocket, I guess. But do y'all have any questions on those eligibilities? Let's go down to what the actuary has calculated for the cost of funded benefits. And I'll use a good example here. I mean, y'all have a seven percent employee deposit rate with a two-twenty match, but let's just assume it was a two-hundred percent match or a two-to-one match. Every once in a while, I get asked this question by Commissioners Courts. And that is, well, if our folks are putting in seven out of their paycheck and we're matching two-to-one, shouldn't we be putting in fourteen percent out of our payroll budget to fund that that match? And my question is, well, in a world where nothing ever changed, you know, if everybody came to work for y'all at age twenty or whatever and put in thirty, thirty-five years and they all retired, then that number might be right. But we all know that you have people come and go. Some people will quit, pull their money out, you know, they do, they lose that matching money that stays in y'all's pot to fund someone else's benefits down the road. And you've got good economies, bad economies, investment returns, payroll growth. So, that's why the cost to counties to fund benefits is not always cut and dry. It always goes up and down every year depending on plan experience, okay? And so, let's take a look at y'all's costs going into twenty twenty-two. And I'm gonna look at there's your minimum required rate, and this is by state statute. There's no rate holidays. Whatever those actuaries calculate, that's the minimum cost that the county has to send in to keep the plan funded in a healthy manner. You know, some of these pensions across the country that are in trouble, one of the reasons they're in trouble is because the actuaries take a look at the plan and they say, well, we think this is a minimum percentage of your payroll that y'all should send us to keep the thing funded in a healthy manner. And then the employer turns around and says, well, we hear what you're saying, but we're not gonna do that. And then they wonder why they're in trouble and they have a funding issue. Well, this makes us one of the most conservative retirement systems in the country because it's by state statute that whatever that minimum rate is that those actuaries calculate has to be paid every year to keep the plan funded. And it's designed that way so that if a county has any kind of an unfunded liability, that part of that rate goes to pay that liability off over twenty years. It's like a twenty-year mortgage, so to speak. And what causes an unfunded liability? Well, bad economy. Investment return assumptions, like we were talking about a while ago, those changing. You know, let's say you cut your staff in half or by a third or whatever, your payroll may not be as big as it was and the actuaries thought it was gonna be a certain amount. So, all those contribute to an unfunded liability happening. And so, what y'all are doing though, and y'all know this, is y'all are paying a higher monthly percentage of your payroll than the required, which just goes to pay off that liability faster than that twenty years. I like to, I like to compare it to like doing extra mortgage payments. So, I think y'all can relate to that, try to pay off your house quicker, you know? But y'all are doing a, the minimum required rate for y'all going into next year is twelve point eight-two percent of your payroll budget. Y'all are currently sending us an elected rate of fourteen point two-two. So, and I'll show you some projections here in a moment based on the latest valuation as to what they think things are gonna be for the county for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, and Tommy, for your information, you've hosted that several years ago.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions on that, on that part? I mean, if you look down at the bottom of that page, one of the things that employers look at when reviewing the funding health of their plan is something called a funded ratio. Basically, that means that the closer to a hundred percent funded a county is, the closer they have fully funded the benefits employees have accrued up until this point in time. Most bond rating agencies like Fitch or S&amp;P, they'll tell you that plans like y'all's, if they're eighty percent funded or better, they're in good shape. Going into next year, y'all are eighty-seven percent funded. And I get that question asked me all the time, what's a good funded ratio? Or, you know, Ralph, when, when, what's it gonna cost us when it's all said and done? And I have the same answer for especially for county government, and that is, well, when y'all can tell me when that last retiree gets that last check, I can tell you exactly what it's gonna cost us. But this kind of helps y'all review your plan every year. And y'all decide whether or not, hey, this is, we like what we're doing, we can change something. We basically give y'all the local control and the flexibility every year to review these plans. So, any questions on that, y'all? Okay. Moving over to page three on that document. Most financial planners these days will tell you when you're saving for retirement, you gotta put away enough money to be able to replace somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy to a hundred percent of your final salary to sustain you in retirement. Now, everybody's gonna have a different situation. You may have your mortgage paid off, you may have a rich aunt that just passed away and you've got all of the money. You may still have a mortgage that you're paying on. Some folks might wanna travel. So, those are things to take into consideration. But what you all are looking at here on this page is under the current level or benefit levels here at the county. If someone retired after a certain number of years, just based on the TCD benefit. Okay, now, social security plays a role in your retirement money. Personal retirement savings investments play a role in that too. But based on the current benefit levels on just the TCD benefit, you know, if somebody came here, as y'all seeing that small little bar on the left, and they put in just ten years here, they're looking at replacing about twenty-three percent of their final salary from their TCD benefit. Well, they've only been here ten years, that's why. Remember what I said a while ago, it's a cash-based or a savings-based plan? And so, that's not somebody y'all would probably consider a career employee here at the county because this plan's designed to give an adequate retirement benefit to a career employee, okay? Not somebody that puts in ten years, all right? If you look on over to the right, you know, somebody that comes here and puts in twenty-five, thirty years, they're gonna replace somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy-two to ninety-two percent of their final salary just from the TCD benefit. So, that should give y'all a good idea on how good of a benefit it is that y'all have for your folks. Any questions on that? Moving over to the last page of this document. And by the way, every year around the middle of April, first of May, we email y'all your rates, your employer rates for the coming year, okay? That gives y'all time to review things if you needed to and get with me if you have any questions on anything. And we produce this document that y'all are looking at when those rates come out in spring. And so, if y'all ever wanna see the latest documents based on the latest actuarial evaluation, when the new rates come out in spring, you can pull them from your employer portal that y'all have access to. But this last page kind of gives y'all an idea what the minimum required rates have been doing here for the last four or five years and what's affected them from one year to the next. If you look at that last column, going from this year to next year, y'all's minimum required rate coming into this year was thirteen point oh-six percent of your payroll budget. It's gonna be, like I mentioned a while ago, twelve point eight-two, even though y'all are sending us that higher elected rate. And you can see not one thing affects a rate going up and down every year. Like in this example, y'all saw what happened in twenty twenty, how the pandemic affected the economy early in the year. But there was a big rebound, third, fourth quarter of twenty twenty. And so, that had a positive impact on y'all's rate, not a whole lot, but a positive impact. The fact that y'all are sending us that elected rate, that kind of gives you an idea how that impacts your minimum required rate. But y'all had, and I looked this up, the biggest impact on y'all's minimum required rate going down for next year was due to demographic changes. And one of the interesting things about that was retiree mortality here at the county. The folks that have retired from the county, I don't know what kind of, what y'all put in your drinking water here, but they're living longer, which is great, but that means pension payments. All right, actually, no, let me reverse that. Let me back up. They're not living longer. They're, they're, apparently, you've had some retirees pass away before their life expectancy. And so, maybe I need to change once in a while here, yes. I always joke around on that. I'm sorry, I got that backwards.
It's the water either way.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. But every year, I, you know, I encourage y'all to pull this document when the new rates come out and see how things are going. Let's move over to that other document that's in your other sleeve. And I've got it intentionally turned to this page here. Plan rate projection. And based on the latest valuation, the actuary's crystal ball is saying this is kind of what they expect y'all's minimum required rate to be at for the next several years if you kept doing that higher elected rate that y'all sent us. So, based on that, it's showing that the rates are gonna remain, or the required rates are gonna remain below that. I had some employers this year who were doing an elected rate, but it wasn't much higher than they're required. And the impact that that investment return assumption had ended up making that required rate exceed their elected rate for next year. Y'all are not in that boat. So, this is here just to give y'all an idea down the road how to budget and what to expect. You know, once again, the further this thing goes out, the more of an art it becomes for the actuaries. But we try to produce this so y'all can just get an idea. And so, and if you turn to the next page, you know, a while ago, I talked about your funded ratio being eighty-seven percent. And this kind of gives y'all an idea what that funded ratio is gonna get to if y'all kept doing what you're doing down the road. What are we looking at, twenty thirty-three? Twenty thirty-four? When you ask, when it's estimated to get to a hundred percent? By the way, I won't be here by then, y'all. You'll have somebody else here. But it's just a good document for y'all to have. And any questions on that?
One question, wait, so if someone hires with a county and they don't make the investment, but we have matched that money up to that time until they bet. Say they leave early.
Yes.
How do we split that out? I mean, the money that we put in, we get the, the county gets back the.
It stays.
The money and then they just get what they put their seven percent plus their interest.
Plus their interest. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we.
Yes, sir.
And our part stays in the system. Stays in our.
Correct. So, for example, let's say y'all have a year where you had more people withdraw their money when they quit that year than was expected by the actuaries. You know, the actuaries are thinking these younger folks are living for the day. More of them are gonna pull the money out if they quit. But if you had more to it than they thought, you know, that could be a positive impact on those costs, these rates for the coming year.
And maybe, and Tommy may understand this, and some of the people in the audience may not, may not understand this. When you're saying we're eighty-six, eighty-seven percent match.
Oh, funded, funded.
Funded, that means if everybody decided, hey, I want my money, they can draw it out, we have that much in there to cover that debt.
Correct.
I didn't know if everybody in the audience understood that. So, the county's done a great job.
Oh, yeah.
With guidance and doing.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, doing that elected rate. That's, you know, if a county has the resources to do something like that, why not? One other thing I wanted to mention to y'all before I wrap it up is we are in the process next year of completely going paperless. And one of the things we want y'all to encourage your employees to do is if they haven't done, done it so far, to go online and register their account. Number one, for safety purposes. If your employees go in there and they register their account, they're taking control of that account. And that prevents somebody from trying to go in and steal their account, basically, okay? So, we're encouraging that. The, there are so many advantages to having your employees register their account online. They can go in there to change their beneficiary. They can, they can go in there, change addresses and run estimates on them. They can go in there and do a little dreaming. They can run estimates on themselves based on a certain retirement date. And so, anything we can do to help y'all encourage your folks to do this, we will do it.
Will you get us something that we can send out?
You bet.
Please, please.
I'll send Chelsea some things. We've got some posters. We got a poster, we've got some formatted emails that we've, templates that we've already done that we can send out.
No disagreeing.
Yeah, and she can also pull a list from her employer portal of those folks that haven't registered their account yet. And so, to help, help y'all out.
All right, any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right.
There's Chelsea right behind you, by the way.
All right.
All right, no questions. Thank you for being here, Mr. Wilson Wallace.
Thank you all, I look forward to working with you and I hope everybody has a great Christmas and a great, hopefully, a normal twenty twenty.
There you go. Yeah, there's no accidents required. So, for the record, there's no action on number one on special company. All right, we got some guests we need to get to. Let's go to economic development tourism. Sam, you out there?
Sam.
That's fine. Five point two, discuss, etc., meaning Chambers County American Rescue Plan Act Recovery Plan regarding the section on TBCTD Trinity Bay Conservation District.
Yes, sir. So, I've got Michael here from Public Management. I'm gonna let him kind of speak to this process that we're going through.
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. Good morning. So, I'm Michael McGee with Public Management. We're the grant administration firm that's been managing the county's American Rescue Plan allocation and also the Hankamir wastewater treatment plant contract with the General Land Office. So, you know, this one, we bid out the project for the Hankamir wastewater treatment plant projects. Bids came in high, about six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars approximately. And I'm just trying to figure out where, who is gonna pick up the bill for that amount. The, I think the agreement came out to be that the county would use some of the American Rescue Plan allocation to go towards the overages because there had already been some amount of money, approximately eight hundred thousand that had been appropriated for projects with Trinity Bay Conservation District. And so, today, the items that are on the agenda would just solidify the county appropriating six hundred forty-four thousand dollars towards the Hankamir wastewater treatment plant project and allowing American Rescue Plan dollars to go towards the G L contracts.
And we, we did have Scott Kaelin, David Hoard here with Trinity Bay. Good morning, gentlemen. We've already done this with this last court, this is just to.
Just formalizing it, yes, sir.
Okay. What's my question, Gore? Settle back, Mr. Collins. Any questions?
I said a comment, Mike, on a, on a resolution itself. It kind of stated in it, kind of alluded to that we had approved five point six million dollars out of the recovery plan towards TBCTD, and that was only one of the projects that we.
Wait a minute, that's on five point three?
Is it? Yeah.
Yeah, let's.
Resolution.
Let's vote on five two and then go.
Okay.
All right, those in favor? Close, most security, five thirty, discuss, set a resolution allocating ARPA funds to the completion of the Hankamir wastewater treatment plant. Now, go ahead.
Okay. So, the way the resolution's wrote, it kind of alludes that we had approved that five point five million to TBCTD. And that just so it was clear, that was only one of the projects we had considered in the overall plan, so it was not approved.
Yes, sir.
So. That's all I had for that.
Right, so we had originally put in three projects. Remember when we developed that original list of projects? We built in way more than we knew we had to spend, just in case as we moved from top priority further down, things were not feasible due to either too much cost or we didn't need them anymore, so on and so forth. So, we did build in that four point five million. So we did build in that four point five million dollar basically doubling of the point three MGD plant. That's why that's listed in here, but as Commissioner Hammond said for the record, all of those projects are considered until we begin acting on them, and we may or may not get to every project on that list. So everything is just for consideration until we begin actually moving forward with it.
And like the previous staple, the statement Michael just said that we had appropriated eight hundred thousand. We really had not. We had identified.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's a very important distinction.
So the back up a little bit, the this this plan covers the new Jay Ashley's new subdivision. He put in three hundred thirty thousand or whatever it was. Three hundred six thousand, whatever that amount was. And so it's going to cover his subdivision and the new one coming in. I understand Trinity Bay's working with Mr. What's his name? Sanderson, thank you. Mr. Sanderson, kind of the same deal.
And any other growth and development in that particular area. So anybody that's currently served by the existing wetland facility will also be serviced by this. And and as we know, that particular area is growing pretty rapidly, and so this will serve us all new development in that area.
Looks like it is going to be a high development area.
I think so. I think so.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the resolution. First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Hammond. All the questions on the favor? Close most carries. Discuss consider resolution addressing updates to Hankam wastewater treatment plant project completion.
Just the third part in that formalization of uh, you guys agreeing to allocate these funds to that project.
Now, I think I know we understand, but I mean, you're overseeing these projects.
Yes, okay, yes. So this project is what we call a pass through project, meaning we received a direct allocation from the GLO post Harvey for a certain amount of money. And that money was identified by the court at the time to be directed towards this project. Obviously, as time has moved on, things have become more expensive. But basically, the way this works is I will oversee the actual funds with the help of Michael and Patrick and Public Management and you guys, the court, and work with TVCD hand in hand to complete the project. And then, once the project is done, we sign it over to TVCD. They're the owner of the project moving forward. We have no ownership, say responsibility towards that project.
David, you or Scott come up and ask you a question if you don't mind.
So David is the new interim interim manager of TVCD.
Yes, sir.
David Hoyt, for the record, go ahead.
David.
This is this is what we discussed. I know we had discussed more funding. The court came to an agreement that we were going to fund this amount of money. Any overages is Trinity Bay's responsibility.
Yes, sir.
So that's understanding that y'all have.
Yes, sir.
Within and y'all have someone that's working with Samantha to do everything.
Right.
And and Samantha, we're good on our timeframe on this sort of plan.
Yes, sir. We requested a one year extension from the General Land Office. We received the final documentation to sign that extension, I think, a month ago. Judge Somier received it and executed it. So that's been approved. We've got a year from the the thirtieth of November, I believe. So it's just passed, but we've got a year from that date, so we have until November thirtieth of next year. And we feel confident that we can complete the project because of the nature of it being a package plant within that amount of time.
Okay.
All right, questions? Senator motion?
Second.
First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Hammond. Questions over the favor? Posed most carries. Sam, we'll come back five more in a moment.
Thank you.
CJ, let's take care of yours. Thank you, guys. David, thank you, Scott. Five point five, discuss center amendment to Hunt Southwest Cedarport LLC tax abatement agreement. Morning, DJ.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Back in August of twenty twenty one, Hunt Southwest Cedarport LLC presented a request for amendment to their tax abatement agreement that had been approved by the court back in April of twenty twenty. This was in concert with them pursuing a tenant for their building, a million square foot facility over in Cedarport. They have been in negotiations with potential tenants since that time. The elements of the amendment reflect, or the tenant at least, the job creation of a hundred fifty plus full time jobs. Average inventory annually fifty plus million dollars in additional leasehold and additional equipment improvements of about fifty million dollars. So the during that discussion back in August, there were some stipulations that were raised by the court that conditions that that the amendment should reflect, two of which were minimum stipulated inventory levels and then job creation. So the amendment that you had before you reflect both those. And so the the intent today is to present these amendments, have some discussion about that, and then if approved on Southwest can be able to close their agreement with the potential tenant. So the term of the agreement stays the same as the initial agreement that was adopted back in twenty twenty from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty one to twenty thirty. And so the abatement that's in effect for twenty twenty one remains the same, consistent with the initial or the original abatement. The schedule that's noted on the second page of the amendment shows the proposed change. Twenty twenty one remained the same at a hundred percent, and then the years twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four would affect fifty percent tax abatement, and then twenty twenty five through twenty thirty would be fifty five percent for the net impact of fifty five percent abatement. Under section six, the amendment to the original contract would reflect that Hunt Southwest tenant as defined and and not disclosed as yet. They have as close as they are. There are some theories as to who they are when, you know, it's probably the worst kept secret in real estate, but it is. It is what it is. That they would attempt to make their best commercial efforts to ensure that a minimum seventy five permanent jobs are employed, you know, at that facility. And those would be filled by residents of Chambers County. That is very difficult. Hurdle to to surmount, if you will. And so some of the language that was initially presented to Hunt Southwest have have with respect to clawbacks to default have been pulled out. And that second paragraph under six zero three, you know, speaks to that, that the failure of the tenant to provide those required permanent employees will not result any sort of event of default. They'll make their best effort to do that, and we will report that accordingly. In six zero four, they have no problem stipulating to the taxable value at every annual January one anniversary date through years twenty twenty three to twenty thirty, that it would be a minimum of fifty million dollars. The default trigger that's being presented for the course consideration today is that as long as that value, I mean, fifty is target, but if it doesn't drop below seventy percent of that, thirty five million dollars, that they would not be in the fall. So the range of inventory that's going to be, it's being presented or stipulated to is thirty five million, fifty million dollars at every January one over the term. And the term is changed from twenty twenty two to twenty thirty to twenty twenty three to twenty thirty. So if they effectuate their lease with Hunt Southwest this month, which is what is planned, they're going to make their tenant improvements in twenty twenty two. The abatement that's going to be rendered or effectuated in twenty twenty two will be fifty percent. And in twenty twenty three is the first year, the January one of twenty twenty three is when they expect to have at least fifty million dollars in inventory under consideration. So those are the largely, you know, major changes that are being proposed for consideration today.
So it's very important for budgeting purposes that we do have a minimum inventory.
That's correct.
And I'm glad we're doing this now. So the permanent jobs are a hundred and fifty, and they're doing their best to get half of those three terms kind of risen.
That's correct. And and, you know, I know that Commissioner Hammond has been, you know, concerned about the number of employees that are associated with these tax baiting agreements, and we've tried to garner through a survey of the existing contract holders, which has been sort of like chasing cats. Or nailing Jello to the wall, a number of issues that are associated with that because of changes or impacts of reporting structures associated with COVID and like, but also the preponderance of the use of temporary agency or staffing agencies for the logistics sector. Magnum staffing and a number of other entities, you know, managed personnel. In in the past, and still is the case, Chambers County minimum requirements with respect to job creation under tax payment guidelines is five jobs. And so the compliance reports that are provided by the taxpayers who have contracts with the county have always complied. I mean, it's very, very difficult to not have five jobs, and they always exceed that. How many are Chambers County residents is the key question. So in anticipation of last court, when the court adopted the new post guidelines that reflect what the the elements every in this contract with respect to stipulated minimum values for existence, if they stipulate or certain sectors with respect to warehouse operations, if they stipulate to a minimum inventory level as part of their industrial district agreement with City of Baytown, it's the expectation that at minimum, the county will expect that in their contract as well. And if not identified during the initial confirmation of the contract, that the contract would be amended to reflect that. The numbers, if you will, with respect to, we can share with you with a degree of confidence based upon reporting with respect to labor force participation in count in the county as it stands right now, and this is in toto, not necessarily for tax abatement agreements, is that the labor force participation rate as of the second quarter in twenty twenty one in Chambers County is sixty five point two percent. Compared to the state of Texas, which is sixty four point five or sixty three point two for the USA. It's consistent with that. Chambers County has a higher rate. The prime age labor force participation rate and size for civilian population of ages twenty five to sixty four is seventy nine point eight percent. That is comparison to eighty point six percent for Texas and then eighty two point one for the USA. The opportunity for employment with respect to some of these jobs, particularly in logistics and distribution sector, is in the age group of sixteen to twenty four. That that it's very, it's a lower than expected participation rate, labor rate. Veterans, there's six percent of the civilian labor force is represented by veterans ages eighteen to sixty four. But Chambers County has a very high participation rate in the age range for veterans, eighteen sixty four of eighty six percent. That's in comparison to seventy eight percent for Texas and seventy six point six percent for the for the country. So a lot of folks are employed in Chambers County. As of October of this year, the unemployment rate or unemployment claim rate, few of those individuals presenting for unemployment claims in Chambers County is seven point one percent. So it's dropping down consistently over time. And it was one point that during the shutdown, it related to COVID, that unemployment at James County was nineteen percent. And overrepresented by those individuals that worked in construction and trades.
I I agree, Judge. Just for just for clarification, so everybody will realize, I mean, the folks work hard to and we've changed some stuff on our abatement agreements and everything to make it more beneficial for the people in Chandler County. And that's one thing setting this minimum inventory stuff, thirty five or fifty me, was that equate to tack those? I mean, we'll be getting that right right off, and that has, I mean, we worked hard, I mean, Commissioner Collins and all of us is is to to get that as part of our agreement because tax abatement stuff, it has moved forward and it was time to change and put some more stuff in there. So just so people know, for that kind of minimal, I mean, we're going to start getting money right up front the first year when they start putting inventory in there. And that's on top of the abatement.
All right, questions on five point five?
DJ reminded what you said to TI. The tenant agreement was.
Fifty million.
Fifty million? Okay, so then the hundred, the hundred percent is not included, TI, so the praise value will jump up fifty million.
That's correct.
When it gets back down to fifty percent.
Yeah, the value on the books for that they're going to be paying, I mean, well, that they're going to get paid at a hundred percent for twenty twenty one, it's thirty four million dollars. This is a show.
Yeah, it's basically just a show.
It's just a show.
It's a. All right, entertaining us.
Commissioner, for your questions.
Well, hang on a minute. Second. And now, go ahead.
It's a two hundred seventy thousand dollars for you.
All right, most by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Gore. Any other questions, comments over the favor? Posed most carries five point six, discussing certain Niagara Bottling LLC economic development agreement.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. As you know, Niagara Bottling Company is building a facility over in Cedarport Industrial Park. Back in December of twenty twenty, this project was presented as a competitive project known as Project Hydrate. At that time, the recommendations were presented at court consideration because it was a competitive project. They were looking at sites in various counties and maybe one other state. Project Hydrate at that time was to to build a suit facility at five hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand square feet. In two phases, they would hire approximately seventy five or up to seventy five full time employees. Phase one would be approximately fifty jobs, phase two approximately fifteen, twenty five new employees, capital investment, you know, ranging anywhere from ninety or eighty five million to a hundred million dollars. The court approved making the proposal to Project Hydrate at that time in December. And then subsequent to that, in August of I'm sorry, in June of twenty twenty one, the company now known as Niagara LLC presented an application of proposal in chapter three eighty one. And that was approved by the court. The the actual elements of that agreement were approved as well. And then the court subsequently, two weeks later, established, held the public hearing to establish the Niagara Bottling Company reinvestment zone. The elements of the agreement are maintained largely the same that were agreed to back in June of twenty twenty one. There are some changes that need to be made associated with timing. There's been projects been impacted by, you know, construction timing, if you will, that was that are noted in the agreement. The timeline for completion right now was in, it was originally thought that the project would be completed by the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty two. But right now, it's realistically and going to propose to the court that that expectation, that construction covenant be changed to September twenty twenty two. So that did not trigger, you saw the clawback there. The same elements that are challenging the Hunt Southwest amendment or, you know, the and profit issues associated with construction jobs and or full employment, they're going to make their best efforts to meet the requirements or the required job creations that are stipulated in the contract by all indications for the first phase that they are going to meet that, but going to actually make some language, some changes to associate what their predictions are that they provided to us here most recently. They've asked for some, a carve out with respect identity, what they've asked for, you know, has been provided, the court's provided that sort of thing in the past related to the provago agreement and the like. So that's fairly straightforward. And then lastly, a a specific new request that they would request an aggregate limitation of liability of the company that it would be equal to the actual amount of tax abatement. So if in fact their liability is, I mean, there's tax abatement and that they're aggregate limitation liability would be consistent with that. And there are some contracts that we have or that the county has with ExxonMobil and Enterprise Products that has that language. So it's not anything, but it's typical for the agreements that Niagara entered into in state Texas. So what's presented for the court today, even though all of these things were approved, the agreement was never presented for discussion, as this was happening today with the changes that I've noted today. We do have some representatives from Niagara that are here to answer any questions that you may have with respect to the nature of the project.
Question?
So there's no reference to inventory in here?
No, it's it's not, that's not anything else considered at that time.
Yeah, I think we've since what happened for this year, we changed it to include inventory, so it didn't happen to us again for budget purposes.
I will add that, you know, personally, I'm I'm okay with the good faith effort to hire Chambers County employees. Because the fact is, we did not have housing for as many employees as were creating jobs, especially housing that they can afford. We need to work on trying to get something that they can afford.
Yeah, I think what we're doing on Trinity Bay is is going to help with that situation also. So all right, Senator Motion?
Second.
Most by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Hammond. Any other questions? For the favor? Close most carries. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Don't leave. I'm going to get Mr. Watkins up next.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Did you help out? You and Eric. All right, let's go to one point three, discuss success of presentation update on Chambers County Junior Financial and Debt Service Plan presented by Nathan Watkins, Integrative Results LLC. Good morning, Nathan.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Happy to present the debt side of the ten year financial and debt plan this morning. Prioritize the debt plan over the financial plan just because of the pending needs in the county to get a better understanding of where they stand and provide a ten year look ahead for capital projects. What we, the model that we build allows for ten years and a hundred and seventy million dollars of debt to be issued without a tax rate increase. And it's also built on the assumptions that it's only known value that the county has on the books today. So we didn't do any trend analysis where we looked back over the last. So we didn't do any trend analysis where we looked back over the last five or ten years and said, the county's taxable value increased by this much and apply that for in order to provide the most conservative model we could, it's only non-value on the books today moving forward. And then, and because of the impacts of twenty twenty and the reduction in value, I went ahead and took seven hundred and fifty million dollars off the books for inventory, which was just a point of a discussion under the tax payments and also for the storage of minerals and Montlave on the hill. When you look back history or this past year in twenty twenty one, warehouse inventory in the county, this, these numbers come from the present district, were valued at five hundred and seventy two million and storage of minerals on the hill were valued at six hundred and eleven million. So you've got just over, just over a billion dollars in in value that could fluctuate and affect your ability to to pay your debt service moving forward. So by subtracting seven hundred and fifty million dollars out of that, it gives you ample cushion moving forward. So in in a historically terrible year, you lost approximately four hundred million in value between warehousing and four hundred to five hundred million between warehousing and storage of minerals. We subtracted seven hundred and fifty million dollars out of that. So you've got ample cushion, I believe, moving forward to be able to guarantee that you'll be able to make your debt payments and and provide a hundred and seventy million dollars of capital moving forward for the county. The model that you have in front of you, if you pull that up, you can see how, you can see how the model's built. So you've got your proposed value on the left, the years of this, this agreement started twenty twenty three, so it does not assume that there's going to be debt issuance in twenty twenty two. The reason behind that was, my understanding is the the Justice Center is going to start design in January. That'll be an eighteen, twelve eighteen month design process. You can go out to the voters in November for a bond election that'll take you to twenty twenty three, you'll be starting to wrap up your, your design. And you can second quarter of twenty three issue the debt, go into construction after that.
Yeah, and we're working on a contract right now with H O K. Started, I think it's close to being finalized.
You can see your debt rate is point oh three, point oh eight three cents of your total tax rate. We kept that constant moving forward throughout the plan. And there's also very conservative estimates on your interest rates. Something I should note, I should back up and note is that the first two issuances are thirty year debt. That was recommended because it's likely where you're going to fund your Justice Center out of, and that's, that asset has a life expectancy much longer than thirty years. So on facilities like that, it's very common to go out to thirty year debt issuances, and then from there it drops back down to twenty year debt. And your interest rates are very conservative as well. I know that we're issuing debt at at two percent or below this past year, but you can see they started at three point two five and grow as much as five percent. So that'll probably provide additional capacity unless, unless those rates climb there as well. And then as far as the financial plan, it's about fifty percent complete, and we'll be back to present that in the January, beginning of February. And then there are also be a, an opportunity to tweak this and get a better understanding of the capital moving forward if we need to make a few adjustments. But the ten year financial plan is simply a look ahead that evaluates your revenues and expenditures expenditures and the current budget practices of maintaining maintaining six months reserves. And 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 it gives you an opportunity to look for any, any areas where it can become troublesome looking forward. So it's, it's just a ten year snapshot of your current revenue expenditures annualized at a five percent growth rate. And and it'll allow you to to plan ahead if you're, if you're going to have, if it shows that your reserve days are going to have to dip down, or if you're going to have additional reserve base, you may be able to move some additional opportunity to get your tax rate into INS, you know, ongoing capital that 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 you want to fund that year as well. But we'll be back, I'll bring that plan back to you at a later day.
So this is the draft, you're really not ready for us to formally accept it until we have all of the.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I anticipate in January, February timeframe, the plan will be complete and that'll be the time to adopt it. But I did want to get in front of you today and tell you what your debt capacity is. I know you have some planning and some some imminent capital looking forward. And just, I, I think that's very good news that you can, that you can deliver a hundred and seventy million in capital projects without a tax rate increase.
Yeah, I think it's great news, I think it's what we expected, but it's nice to see it on black and white.
Nathan, I got a question on your projected asset evaluations.
Okay.
Are you taking into account the, as the abatements roll off?
Yes, yeah, and that's where we worked with Aaron and BJ. So the, we, we built that whole formula in, into your known values, and when they roll off and roll on and pile of payments are all included in that.
So I noticed like up in, we actually peak according to this in about twenty thirty one, twenty thirty two, twenty thirty two. And then it starts decreasing from there. What causes that peak and then that drop back again?
So the peak is those abatements rolling on from the past ten years of projects we've done. And then, since it's only based on known value and it doesn't anticipate new projects coming in, such as the Niagara Bottling project, that's where depreciation starts, starts kicking in on your industrial and.
It's from depreciation.
Yeah, yeah.
But like Nathan said, you caught that, it gets up to center, you knew that.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, and the, and the, and the goal in this entire process is what is the absolute most fiscally conservative way to approach issuing debt over a ten year period? And and I think with those assumptions built in, there's a lot of certainty that the, that the court can count on and that this is very sustainable. This is actually the minimum, you know, in my experience in Montlave, when we built this plan, we often exceeded it by several million dollars because it is absolutely conservative, which is, I think, the, the best way to approach issuing debt.
Yeah, and that's what we wanted. All right, any other questions?
I mean, what's this little small section in here you have highlighted, Nathan?
So, yeah, so that is, that, so you can see, you take it out to the thousands and your tax, it causes a tax rate to to change from point oh eight three to point oh eight five. So it may have to go up there that that would not require a tax rate increase on the residence, but it may require, it's so far out, I wouldn't anticipate it, but it may require a slight adjustment in your M and O and your INS rate. So you may have to reduce your M and O side by point two hundred, sorry, of a, of a penny to make up for that, which is nil in overall, but just wanted to call, it's, it's just highlighted there for a reference. But the ten year plan will also evaluate that as well. Any adjustments in your M and O and the revenue that you're going to drive off the M and O side of your tax rate will be modeled to include this as well.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Nathan, looks good, I appreciate it. I look forward to January, February.
Yeah, I guess.
We've got, yeah, we got it. We'll get him a copy. All right, let's take ten minute recess at ten thirty two AM. Action. Hi, Chambers County Commissioner Cole coming to order our executive after break, ten forty nine AM. And we're going to Health and Welfare fourteen one, discuss consider purchase of vehicles for the public health department, allowing the public health departments lease the vehicles from the county through grant funding program, Ray Ben.
Good morning. So this really isn't as complicated as it sounds in the agenda item, but y'all are well aware that public health has received, you know, close to seven million dollars in grant funding since the beginning of the pandemic. And those grant dollars are identified for different projects in response to COVID, whether it's immunizations, health disparities, community outreach, those types of things. So in our, in our grant proposals, we did write in for a couple of vehicles. And we, those were approved, but we cannot buy those vehicles. That's just our, our contract said that we can't purchase vehicles. There's different contract periods for each of these grants that the vehicles comes out of. So with the way vehicles are right now, being able to find a vehicle, lease it, purchase it, we wanted to propose to the county, if the county would purchase these vehicles and then let the public health department lease these vehicles back from the county. So for two of the vehicles, one of them was, is, we have identified forty eight thousand dollars for a purchase for the immunization program. And currently, we're using the WIC van to do some of that. And then we're also using the FEP truck as well as personal vehicles. But y'all know that we do immunization outreach in all parts of the county, there's lots of supplies. And now we're tearing down and setting up at several places. We've been working with Commissioner Comes on McCall Park, which has still been wonderful. But in January, we're going to start doing smaller clinics and going to different places in the county. So there's forty eight thousand dollars identified for SUV for the immunization program and twenty one thousand dollars identified for community health, a small vehicle. That's in our health disparities grant funding. We also have thirty four thousand dollars available to lease a passenger van. We're not moving on that right now because if we decide to move forward and we need the use of the van, then what we'll do is we'll approach the court about reimbursing the county out of our grant funding for use of the van for driver, things like that. So that, that's not, I don't want to talk about that one today, but I did want to let you know that that's available also. So I guess we visited with George and then he said this is the best way to proceed is just to first of all, get permission from the court, that they'll agree to purchase these vehicles, and then we'll lease them back from the county. Once we did that, then they would go out and start looking for specific vehicles.
I guess the only alternative would be for you to lease them from a leasing, then you got limited mileage and stuff that you need.
Yes, sir, and that was one of the things, that was one of the reasons why we thought that this is, I mean, we're, we're doing outreach and going to places and those, you're very limited on mileage and what you're able to do. And so we thought at the end of it, we're just may not be able to have our vehicles for as long as we thought because of the restrictions on the leasing.
So the county owned them, well, the county owned them period.
So the county would own them, we would lease them back, and then at the end of that time period where we run out of lease funds, or, you know, then we would, our wish would be for the county then to continue those to the public health department. But with the idea that we've purchased for both of them mostly, you know, almost the total price of the vehicles.
So the forty eight K and twenty one K, that's monies that you have grant monies for designated for a lease?
For a lease, yes, sir.
Okay. And you want to call that to two vehicles?
Yes, there are two vehicles, because they're two different grants. And so one of them is forty eight, and that, the forty eight thousand dollars is just a longer grant program, it goes through twenty twenty four. So we have more dollars, and then the second, the twenty one thousand dollars, that grant program ends May of twenty three.
So we approve this, you'll come back with an item to purchase the vehicle.
And I think we're working, I didn't see her in the corner, we're working on some type of a lease a general lease contract with the county, you know, through the county and in our office. We're fortunate that they've identified, given these dollars to us, but we do, there's restrictions, and this way we're able to use those funds in the way that is going to best suit the county.
But you have to pay it out over X number of years?
No, we've identified for each of these a thousand dollars a month for a leasing vehicle. Again, this isn't our grant proposal, but we can amend those however we need to, because some of these grants, like one of these grants started back in April of twenty one. So what we can do then to make sure that the county would get all of their money is we would amend our grant proposal to them and, and then just to make sure that we were able to use all of those dollars. They don't want them back, I mean, so we just have to, we're doing.
So the next step would, we approve this, and then you come back with the purchase price.
And the contract with lease agreement.
Right, working something through Ash's office, we, we like to build the same, the same scenario. But yes, sir, and at the end of it, like Mary Beth says, they belong to the county, they're ours.
Yeah, and the truth is, we would need to be able regardless, but we got to grant money to.
To help offset, and then, and then the court letting Mary Beth and the group know where those vans are going to go or vehicles are going to go after she's done paying a lease. Do they stay with her, do they come back into the, into the?
So from a budgeting standpoint, we could use this money to offset it, but we still got to find the rest of the money and figure out where it's going to come from.
There's the issue, yes, sir, making sure that you can find, is it about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that'll come out in oh ninety one, and then the lease will go back into oh ninety one, so.
Okay. I'll approve this.
Most my question, Colin, second by Commissioner Gore. Any other questions, comments, or none of the favor? Pose most carries.
Thank you. Y'all want, we don't need any other one, I know we haven't done that in a while, I don't have that much.
You could do a quick update if you.
So there's no Omicron in Chambers County, we know that that variant has been identified throughout Texas. And so, but there's none in Chambers County, our cases continue to be low. We have seen a two percent increase in our positivity rate over the past two weeks, and we just really feel like those cases are attributed to the holiday, you know, for Thanksgiving, it usually takes that, that, that while to kind of, it lags by that, that time. And we are closely monitoring the Omicron variant and, you know, CDC as well as DSHS is still just urging anyone to get vaccinated or fully vaccinated if they need their booster dose. We will start pushing just messaging during the holidays about, you know, hand washing, gathering, those types of things, just because we want to keep the disease transmission lower in Chambers County like it's been. Where we were seeing, I think, nine thousand cases a day in August and twenty one thousand cases a day in September. We're down, I think, in Texas to thirty five hundred cases a day. So we're, it's much improved, and we want to keep it that way in our county.
Greg, put it down.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, one point two discussing fair proving, Nathan, yeah. Proving in our local agreement with Chambers County and all the Chambers County school districts, pleading East Chambers ISD, Anoak ISD, Dus Creek ISD, Harps Hill ISD, we're going to tax abatement adjustments. Aaron. Nathan, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
I wonder if it's small yet the fact that you're giving it all to us today?
Go ahead, Nathan, whenever you're ready.
Yes, a couple of weeks ago or so, Aaron approached me and let me know that there was an agreement or tentative agreement between County and the school district regarding some school equalization funding between.
And there's an agreement, it's a verbal agreement.
Verbal agreement that, that the county has been working on with the school district regarding some school equalization taxes. Gave me some, a bit of the details that are outlined here in this agreement. I put it together and presented it to the school districts in the county to comment. Would make some very minor changes, I think the school districts are in agreement, I'm not sure if they've all signed this by now, but it's presented to the commissioners for review. I think it's been discussed at a prior commissioners' board meeting, if I'm not mistaken, I wasn't engaged in that.
Well, the agreement wasn't, but yes, the.
The concept, the background.
Yes.
I can go back into that if you want, and if there's any questions about it, I can answer those at this time.
So this is just a formal agreement, following up the agreement we made with verbally.
Yes, Judge, just a memorialization of the verbal agreement that I believe you and Aaron made with the school districts pertaining to some school equalization taxes in the last few years.
Yeah, we were working with them and then it did come to court for formal approval. Like I said, this is the agreement followed up that verbal agreement. So, yeah, I know you've been working with back and forth with schools and their attorney, and you feel like there is with all the verbally agreed to this, I don't know decided, but.
Yes, Judge, we've received some very minor proposed changes from Craig Island, who represents the school districts. We've incorporated all of his proposed changes. In addition, we're going to have the tax assessor collector Denise sign on this agreement, acknowledging this agreement for purposes of collecting and charging school equalization taxes. acknowledging this agreement for purposes of collecting and charging school equalization uh, taxes in the future. So everybody's on the same page.
I'm glad you said that because I was going to ask about the tax assessor. Because there were, the first whereas is that even school districts have asserted claims against the county and actually the tax assessor was very involved in that.
Right.
Maybe even more so, so.
Yeah, I don't know that they were, any actual claims against the county, who was claiming to miss the appraisal district.
That's exactly what it was.
Wasn't the county, yeah.
We're not tax assessor, appraisal district.
Right.
Correction.
It's a little convoluted in terms of who benefits from the taxes, who collects it and who appraises value. But I think the, the right party to acknowledge the agreement would be the tax assessor. But in any event, if the appraisal, I guess you've got the old vision of the appraisal. Either district's office.
Yeah, and then there was a claim filed or you, you, it just, um, so, so. Yeah, we probably need to approve it pending changes, allow me to sign off on it once, uh, Nathan.
This uh, this draft has an addendum for the tax assessor collector signature acknowledging and agreeing to the agreement. And if the commissioners would like, we can also make a similar addendum for the uh, appraiser, appraisal district person. I think it's Mitch uh, designed it as well, just so that there's some sort of.
I think Mitch should sign off on it.
Yeah, there's some, some document says this is what we all agreed to.
Yeah, as part of the agreement, I think he, he should actually, should sign off on it. And, and if, you know, we, we need to get it approved. Billy, I know you like what kind of radio and you still can, and put your input to Nathan and before I actually sign it. But uh, you know, one of the payments coming out of this is budget, so. We need to go ahead and get it, get it moving so we can get that first payment done by the end of the year.
Billy, we can, we, I can um, answer any questions you have here. We recessed an executive session, if you feel more comfortable.
It's a public document.
Yes, it will be once it's signed, so finalized.
We're paying the school district's attorney two hundred thousand dollars.
No, it's coming out of their portion of the, the funds they're receiving, all the schools.
So it's a, it's a, it's a four million dollar total payment, Commissioner?
Yes.
Of which the school districts are directing us to pay two hundred thousand of it to their order directly. The remaining three point eight will be divided amongst the school districts.
We can't stop them.
Like, one payment this year and one payment next year?
Yes.
Yes.
Except to the attorney. Attorney receives this payment this year, by the end of this year.
I'm fine with it, Judge, I mean, but I've been a little involved with it, going through the school resource meetings and, and working with.
Yeah, I mean, just got laid on this today.
Yeah, um, but I mean, we could take our, go to the executive and go over. As you won't be doing.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm sorry, Dave, but it's, you know, I've been pushing Nathan to get it done. Of course, he's passing back and forth. You got two attorneys.
That's what scares me, you know?
Yeah, but one of them's your time, that's your pay.
Okay, but I, I definitely think the appraisal district needs to be.
Yes.
Sign off on it and be a part of it.
Denise and the appraisal district. Were those changes being made? I mean, give Judge your authority to sign.
What's my question, Gore? Well, yeah, look at each other.
I'm waiting on Hammond to say it.
So.
Thinking about Pastor Hammond and Billy, any, and you get, you read it.
I'll say yes with protest, okay?
Yeah, any. Read it, any comments you got, you get hold of it, Nathan.
So, one, one question for you, but so this will one hundred percent close this subject right here.
For the last five years of school equalization taxes that were collected. Now, in the future, there's an obligation, this agreement that was agreed to verbally, is that when we have a three eighty-one agreement, right, we're going to segregate out.
Which we're doing.
Yeah, we're doing it now.
Already doing that.
But in this agreement, we've memorialized that if the county decides to collect school equalization taxes for the school districts, so that's an if. If we do it, then we have agreed to a procedure by which we'll segregate out the school equalization taxes from the three eighty-one payments. And so the schools will still get that money, which was the intent, you know?
Correct.
That's.
So there'll, there'll be no more legal action whatsoever. Consider last five years. The last five months.
So one of the important things about this agreement is in exchange for, um, in exchange for this payment that the county should be making over the next two years, uh, we get a release from the school districts and uh, an acknowledgement at least from the tax assessor and appraisal district that we're making these claims, don't go back on the constituents and try to collect the taxes for payments. Billy, you look. Does that ride or?
Oh, yeah.
I know it has, but you know, just that first whereas is kind of, fill me out, just.
All right, got a motion second. Those in favor? Close, most carries, thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Commissioner.
All right, one point one, discussing certain approving order conforming election precincts to revise commissioners' court precincts, Ms. Hoffo, and good morning.
Good morning. Uh, this will wrap us up on this subject.
You promise?
I promise, and uh, I would like the next generation type over ten years from now. So, uh, we have one revision in the uh, in the plan that we adopted at the last meeting. Um, unfortunately, because we didn't have maps to really zone in on. And I'm gonna.
Brad, will you be Vanna White and hold it up from the sofa?
What's that?
You be Vanna White and hold it up.
You got it.
Thank you.
We requested those maps this morning, Brad and I have just the map. But there you're right here in Legends Bay, um, which is, which we continually call the shark's tooth. There's a little portion of that neighborhood that was in Commissioner Precinct Two. And that, and so it was kind of carved out and it was just in the middle of the neighborhood. So you really had to zoom, 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 zoom to get it. So we, we corrected that issue so that all of Legends Bay, everything to the west of thirty-one eighty now is all going to be in the same voting precinct, the same commissioners precinct, et cetera.
So does the tooth go from thirty-one eighty to ninety-nine and then down to Hackberry?
Yes, right, in there.
Okay, so it's got good defined boundaries.
Yes, good defined boundary.
Yeah, this is the revise.
Yes, so Hackberry is the boundary on the south and west.
West, southwest side.
And this is Commissioner Precinct Two.
Commissioner Precinct Two.
And, and Commissioner Precinct Two and uh.
Commissioner Precinct Three is green.
So now that Legends, where that shark, shark, shark.
That's a subdivision there.
Which precinct are you pointing to that it's going to be in, three or two?
Right.
It's the green, all the green is green.
Green, all the shark's tooth is now, zoom, 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 zoom. There were like four streets inside of that neighborhood that, that were left out, unfortunately.
Okay, so that's what we're voting on to be revised?
So we're having to revise that plan, um, the officials' court precincts to make sure that we do that legally incorrectly. And then the second thing we want to make sure of is that we went through and we had, we knew we had to create election precincts due to precincts being oversized uh, in twenty twenty-one, but we were advised by council not to do it until redistricted. And so that's where we are. So precincts one, two, three, four, five, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fifteen remain unchanged. Not a change one to those election voting boxes. But as we knew, uh, in, in March of this year, precincts eight and ten needed to be divided because they were too large. So we did that, so we created.
Which one, you put the voting or the uh, commissioner?
Commissioner. I don't think the voting's on yet.
Voting on the backside. Yeah, there is a voting.
Oh, good, let's do that. Sorry, Anna. So eight and ten, um, had some changes. Precinct six, which is mid-county, which went from the Trinity River to kind of following me without a map, down through Wallaceville and all the way through the city of Anawak, that area has some major changes. And then precinct fourteen has some major changes.
So, let's see.
Precinct, I'm going to start with precinct fourteen.
This is, this is very busy, it's a very busy map. And I tried to incorporate both because it sounded like we had a transparent layer over that, so.
Hi, so precinct fourteen originally was very small. It was about this area right through here. Um, currently, as of today, we have thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty registered voters in Chambers County. And as of today, there, there were five hundred and thirty-seven registered voters in this area, which is a very small election precinct box. Remember, the maximum you can have is five thousand. So with redistricting, this area right here was precinct six and it came all the way through and it really pushed precinct six um, to be this huge precinct box. So we carved out, I like to keep my cities intact, it helps grow elections. We carved out the city of Anawak and State Highway sixty-one to make that the new boundary. As you all discussed this morning, this is a, a growth area right now in Chambers County. So we have to remember that these census numbers do not reflect even the new neighborhoods that are on it because the happen, path post that. So we know that this will be a growing box and that should secure it pretty good for the next decade.
So you're talking about fourteen?
Fourteen is now encompassed from the Trinity River, south of I-ten to the city limits of Anawak, out Highway sixty-one. Uh, you said this was Fairview, Fairordger?
Fairview.
Fairview. And then uh, Fairordger or.
It's nineteen forty-one, it's, it's, the, the name, road name changes, but it's same.
Things changed, made all of a sudden in Chambers County. So this is now going to be voting precinct fourteen. Okay, so precinct six changed because we eliminated this out of precinct six. So precinct six now will encompass um, down, this is the precinct line, right? Three is here, nine is here, this is all precinct six. The other two major changes, so that covers precinct six and fourteen. The other two major changes were eight and ten. As we know, we knew we needed this one because they were overpopulated. So precinct ten, as of this morning, has six thousand and twenty-eight voters, registered voters. So to get in compliance, precinct ten has always been this north part of the west side of the county. So five sixty-five, and from five sixty-five north, all the way around back to Eagle Drive. So this box right here, using five sixty-five as the boundary, so anything on the inside of that box or to the west side of that five sixty-five will now be voter precinct. Eighteen. It's on, it's on there, sorry.
It is eighteen.
Eighteen.
Wait for it.
Okay.
Who's on third?
Who's on third, so this will be eighteen. Now we have precinct ten and eighteen. But there. Ten, half sum of ten will become part of precinct eighteen. Some of precinct eight will become precinct sixteen. And because of this shark's tooth, it will be voter box seventeen. So it, uh, the additions of sixteen, seventeen and eighteen.
So just that section will be seventeen itself.
It's.
Legis base is on. Yes.
I don't know what page.
It's on page fourteen.
And so that will be, because it's a, because it's a different, it's a different commissioner. By law, you can only have one state rep, one commissioner. So because that, it created it to have to become its own voting precinct.
How many registered voters are in?
I don't know yet because we have to adopt the plan before we can put it into the system. We haven't been like, so we'll be burning midnight oil.
How often can we change these?
Um, odd number of years.
So I got a funny film fourteen, with the growth one there, it's going to be divided.
Um, maybe, because you can have up to five thousand registered voters. And it took a long time to get precinct eight and ten to five thousand, so we'll see how long it takes.
We'll see.
Yeah. All right, any questions?
What's your?
Okay, and so the resolution basically states, um, that you uh, approve this uh, at the bottom of page ten, to the extent that any foregoing revised election precincts contain territory inside a city or within an incorporated territory outside the affected city, the Commissioners' Court pursuant to chapter forty-two, double oh seven, numbers one and two, find that either of the two areas, whether with, within or without the incorporated cities, can constitute a separate election precinct of suitable size and shape that contains the permissible number of voters or cannot be combined with another territory on the same side of the city boundary to form an election precinct of suitable size or shape that contains the permissible number of voters without causing another precinct to fail to meet those requirements. Commissioners' Court delegates sufficient discretion to the county clerk and administration of elections to make such boundary adjustments to set election precincts to facilitate the effective administration of elections and to pose the least inconvenience to the voters of the affected election precincts. The above and foregoing changes to the election precincts shall take effect January first, twenty twenty-two and will remain in effect until further, until changes by further order of Commissioners' Court.
So move. What's my question, Gore?
Second.
Thinking about Pastor Hammond.
I know, I want to say, heaven. I wish y'all, I mean.
Thank you very much.
It's been unreal.
Lot of work.
Don't forget Vanna and.
I mean, Brad.
Brad has been, go ahead.
I would like to thank the team because truly, thank you for entrusting us to do this. Um, Brad and Warren and Aaron have been part of these to make sure that enough eyes are saying the same thing. Um, just knowing the county, like I know it, the blessing of driving across the county every single day and seeing when the growth areas are occurring, um, where, you know, trying to keep cities intact together, et cetera. It's a lot of work, but the good news is we had so many unchanged precincts.
Yeah.
And still.
The other good news is, want to do it again for ten years.
And like I said, and then the next generation will have it. Um, but I will say that the uh, the precincts.
And I'm, I'm going to tell you, this is the third time I've been through this and it's, um, it's, this one was a whole lot more complicated due to the growth we've had versus the previous ones.
Not to mention COVID getting everything so late.
True.
Yeah, and so just, um, just, or just, it's nothing more than FYI, but we should. We should be sitting pretty, pretty good now for at least two years. We will have a change, I perceive, in the next two years. And precinct four, which is the Mont Belvieu box, um, because they're already at forty-one hundred registered voters. But we should be sitting pretty from this point on unless, unless the real estate agent over there, you know, I mean, there's just so much growth gonna happen in this county.
I got a quick question. This takes effect January one, twenty twenty-two. What about the Commissioners' precincts revisions?
January first.
So they were not immediately, everything's January first?
Everything. JP.
I hope, I hope Tyce watches this. I have to think.
I know. Okay, so sorry. So we are anticipating hearing from the Secretary of State's office about our countywide polling successful status very soon. So that will also alleviate the need for worrying or finding polling locations within, like the new precinct seventeen, Legends Bay, area where you have to hold elections in a public building, et cetera. So we're really hoping to hear from that, and then that will change a lot of it. Um, so everybody knows we have a, a meeting to discuss our polling locations and et cetera for the primary today. So hopefully, all of those will come together and we will, we'll commendate the voters.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then may I ask, when will this be on the, on the website, the new maps?
So the new maps, as soon as when you get them from, um, the consultant, and that gives Brad and I, um, a chance to get them to where they're readable because he has the program to make them readable. I would say January first. Let's just give us Christmas off. Okay.
Please, can we have him?
Then you get that done by tomorrow, Brad.
All right.
All right, I think we had a question. Let's move on.
Heather, when are you, and it, now, when are y'all drawing for positions on the ballot?
So, so, um, thank you, Commissioner, because there's a, a lot of confusion when it comes to election. A primary election is put on by a political party. The political party basically reimburses for the expenses to hold that election. A primary is so that a party may have fifteen people that want to sign up to be the county judge. The, the primary process makes it so you get a winner out of each political party that will go up against each other in November. So mainly party issues like drawing for names on the ballot to see ballot order is all done through the political party. We, we just get, we just host the election.
All right. Those in favor?
All right.
Close, motion carries. Five point one, Samantha, yeah, Lauren. All right, five point one, just, sorry, Sam.
I was getting a little hangry.
I forgot about you there.
I knew you did.
Discussing center, entering into interlocal agreement with the city of Dayton, with countywide drainage plan study funded by the Texas Water Development Board's Flood Infrastructure Fund.
Do you think my agenda items are long enough, or could I add a couple more words? I try to make them really descriptive. Um, so we've talked about, we've talked about this at length. This is, um, the interlocal agreement between the city of Dayton and the county, uh, for their portion of the Texas Water Development Board, um, flood infrastructure, countywide drainage plan study that we're working on. Pretty standard. Um, we'll just invoice them as we do their, the work in their area.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Mr. Gore. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a big question. So Liberty County's not in this, and the city of Dayton is. So it covers all that territory from Dayton to Chambers County to make this study beneficial to the city of Dayton.
So as of now, we do. We're covering, um, with, I, and I'm, I haven't looked at the map in a while, so forgive me. And there's a lot of numbers floating around in my brain. Um, basically, um, the city will pay for anything that directly impacts the city. And then there will be, if I'm not mistaken, some between the cities, um, farthest reaches and the county, just a little bit of space there between where Mont Belvieu, the Chambers County line is, that the county has, will cover. Um, I did reach out to Judge Knight's office several times at the beginning of this project and never got a response about their, their interest in participating. So I don't know, Judge, if you want to reach out to them and see if.
Sure, if you'll draft me something, I'll see.
Actually, they have a drainage district, more than one, and they have a drainage district that covers that area. It's probably best to reach out to the drainage.
Okay, I'll look into that and see who it is.
I do know River Farms is getting, uh, developed in that area, and the developers for River Farms are interested.
Oh, excellent. I'll reach out to them as well. So, um, and then I believe, um, I've reached out to the city of, um, Beach City as well to see if they, somebody told me they may be interested in participating.
I talked to, uh, Mayor a little bit about it.
Okay. Yeah, so I sent Mayor Daglan an email, and, um, I'll just wait, I'll, I'll follow up with that because it was around Thanksgiving time. Because you, I don't, I know y'all get my weird emails, like, on a Saturday when I have a spurt of brain power, and I'm like, oh, let me send all these emails. So, uh, he probably just missed it.
So we've got an agreement with, with Liberty County.
No.
On another.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm, but we don't want to sit about, but.
Okay, we don't have one on this. We have city of Liberty, city of Dayton.
Oh, maybe city of Liberty.
Yeah, we have WCID number five, um, Mont Belvieu, and, um, that's the four that we are, yeah, four that we have.
Okay, well, I'd be glad to reach out.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll draft an email for you and get it up to you.
Got a motion second. Those in favor? All right, close, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. You can go now.
I'm gonna go.
Now go, or you get angry. All right, it's Coriel. All right, let's go court, get him in, please. Cory, can you hear me? Cory, there you are. Morning.
We're muted.
How many times you said that over the last two years? I know, I said it to me. You muted, Cory. No, sir. See your lips moving? Try now.
It could be an audio segment on my end, Cory.
We haven't had anybody.
No, we haven't.
Hello?
Ah, I heard you.
All right, okay. Try this route.
Want to run bridge, discussing center approval for Ariel Keats, request for survey permission on county-owned property south of Cogor Parkway and along the Cogor Regional Intention Channel, Cory.
Uh, yes, this is just a basic, uh, uh, request. I, I don't have any issue with it. Just, uh, wanted to make you aware that they'll be, um, doing the survey out there. They'll have to, if they decide to use that route, they'll have to send us plans on how they intend to, um, place the line without having a negative effect on our channel.
They're doing most.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Hammond. Any questions? Those in favor? Close, motion carries. Three point two, discussing center bid and construction. Predicted along Hatcherville Road through a donation agreement with Enterprise Products Partners LP, Cory.
Uh, yes, sir. So, uh, we have been working with Enterprise on, uh, some needed, uh, ditch improvements out there that they'd like to see. Um, they have agreed in principle to, uh, fund that project. Um, so we, um, we have their plans. We are manipulating their plans now. Uh, I've got a general, uh, agreement that I'll need to work out, uh, completed with Ashley, uh, before moving forward, but we just want to get permission to follow this process from the court.
Make motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Collins. Questions?
Yeah, is this, is this in addition to the road repairs that they were doing?
And. Yes.
Was not a scope, part of that scope?
Right, this is a total different scope.
Different project.
Uh, Commissioner Hammond has been, uh, involved in it, uh, dealing with, uh, Catherine over at Enterprise Products.
So the process will be that the county will go out for bids for this?
Right, and so, uh, actually, that is the process that we should follow on anything. If it's not in an incorporated area or an interlocal with a incorporated area like a city or a CCID or a MUD. If it's not in one of those, right, so we should enter into an agreement for a donation from them. Uh, we should bid the project. Once we establish the price for the project, then we should get money in hand, uh, prior to awarding it to the, uh, uh, to the contractor. That way, uh, the budget is, is in place and, uh, you know, we'll have a wrecking pie and all that.
Hey Cory?
Yes, sir.
Are we recovering time for employees just doing all the work to get this to bid and everything?
That is, I can s.
Wait, I'm sorry.
That is a consideration that we could do. So Tech dot does a similar type thing, and they tack on a general five percent additional for like inspection services, and if they was to do design, then there would be a little bit there as well. Uh, there's not much on the design. Their, their engineers basically did all of the design. We're just basically, um, revamping their plans. Shouldn't be much time associated with that.
Uh, this has been for the county, correct?
I'm sorry, say again?
Uh, so this has benefited the county along with.
It will be, yes, right.
So, I mean, if we got a little skin in the game.
Well, I got a, I got a question for that. This is in the corporate limits of Mont Belvieu, correct?
Yes, it is.
And I think it's arguably that Hatcherville is a city road. And, you know, uh, we've been expensing a lot of money and effort on Hatcherville Road, and we're not getting any cooperation out of the city of Mont Belvieu. I think it's worth looking at and, uh, getting cooperation with Mont Belvieu on what we're doing on Hatcherville Road. They're collecting, they're more than we are.
Right, well, I, um, we have looked at that. I know Commissioner Hammond has been involved in talking with the city a little bit. Uh, Tommy, you want to talk about that?
Not really. So.
Well, it's, it's been difficult, let me say that.
Yeah, and the city, the city hadn't really wanted to participate in that, so, uh, for whatever reason. So I don't think they have any money allocated to do that, so. Uh, but we need to continue to have those discussions with them, so. But just one note, so Enterprise spent, just so we know who, who the good faith people are. Enterprise spent a little over three hundred fifty thousand dollars on road repairs to Hatcherville Road. Out of there, they paid that bill. Enterprise, uh, Exxon spent, they paid a hundred thousand dollars of that. That total bill was somewhere around four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I think, total, when it was all said and done, for road repairs, which benefits them greatly. Uh, and now.
And those are final ones?
Pardon?
The final ones?
Uh, this ditch project is gonna be somewhere, she estimated around four hundred fifty thousand, so, you know, it's worth doing, so. Enterprise is paying that.
Yeah, and I think some of that will be less. Some of that, uh, work is actually on Enterprise property. So that part would not be in this contract, but, yeah, the total project is in that range, so.
So what, what, tell me what scope work is for the ditch. Is it making it larger, is it?
So.
Yes, it would be.
From the corner of Hatcherville where it turns and goes west, where the, uh, who that talky entrance is right there? So the west ditch, uh, they're cleaning it all out, uh, all the way down to this detention area. They're gonna expand this detention area. They're replacing all the culverts and resetting them to the correct grade. Uh, they're widening and deepening the ditch to the maximum tolerance. So, uh, quite a bit of work there, so.
Right.
And that does benefit us in the long run.
Benefits both parties.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
More than enough.
And it, and we checked to make sure it had no negative impact on anyone else as well.
I got most in seconds. The questions, those in favor? Close, motion carries.
I think we need to keep talking hard to the city of Mont Belvieu.
Yeah, we need to include them, Cory, in these discussions, because it, it, this is truly a city street, but.
If it's in their corporate limits, it's not a through street. It should be the city street.
Well, we.
Through the through street, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either.
Right, well, we did, and obviously, if there would have been money out of our pocket for this, then, um, you know, we would have basically pushed a little bit harder with Mont Belvieu, but, you know, this is something that we could run through us, uh, essentially, and Enterprise is funding it, so. Um, except for a little bit of, uh, administrative and some oversight, it, it's minimal cost to the county.
Yeah, and the, the road repair was, it was, we was on time constraint there, so. Right, we had major projects coming up and, uh, they, they make sure that happens, so. I appreciate their effort on it.
Yeah, I do too. All right, let's go to one forward. Discuss, consider selecting navigation canal, Commissioner Pointe.
Does he want to be reappointed?
Yes, uh, Jimmy Turner, Chambers County, will see reappointed. Uh, the term is off, it's four years, will expire in twenty twenty-six. Uh, he's been a good commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Collins. Any questions? Those in favor? Close, motion carries. Let's go to, I think we're all down to the consent one, five? Or go to one five, which is, uh, tabled until January, because he can be here this morning. Had a very important tip.
He was testing.
All right, now we can go to consent. Precinct one. Precinct two, hold on, two down here. Precinct three.
None.
Four. Hey, I think a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Gore. Those in favor? Close, motion carries, eleven thirty-six AM. We're gonna go to executive session this time. Uh, discuss center personnel issues, uh, twenty-one, twenty point two. Sell, purchase real property. I don't think we have any, but twenty point three. Discuss area valuation of interim HR director. Twenty point four, discuss consider attention FM LA lead executive under session at eleven thirty-seven AM. And consultation attorney if needed.
Love to have real property.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, court come to order after executive session. It's now twelve twenty-six PM. Uh, twenty point one, no action. Twenty point two, no action. Twenty point three, I'll entertain a motion, uh, for, on the interim HR director.
Make a motion, Judge, to remove the interim from, uh, HR director, make it permanent, uh, certain general.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Collins. Those in favor? Close, motion carries. For the record, she's really been doing a great job for us. Twenty point four, discuss and consider extension of FM LA leave. And if there's a motion to approve the FM LA.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Hammond. Discussing, those in favor? Close, motion carries, and I'm going to come forward to court, twelve twenty-seven. And with that, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.